All right, can you hear it?
I can hear it on mic.
We all set?
Should be, since I could hear it on my computer. And make sure you can hear us, right, Steve?
Yeah, I'm good. I can hear you.
All right, thank you very much. Our normal technical difficulties, but we're good now.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome right into the January twenty, uh, January eighth, EPC meeting. Please stand for the pledge. Thank you. I'd like to have Commissioner Dros substituted for Commissioner Claffey. I'd like to have Commissioner Hoffman substituted for Commissioner Pascarelli. And I think that's it, right?
Now, you have one more?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry?
Yes, Box is in here.
Oh, yes. Fox, Commissioner Wakoma, please, would you substitute for Commissioner Fox? Thank you. Okay. Agenda, Mr. Platter?
No changes.
Okay. Public participations for items not listed on the agenda. You want me to speak about anything that's not on the agenda? Will be online?
No one online. Oh, one second.
Okay.
There are someone online, but they do not have their hand raised.
All right, thank you. Next is zoning officers' report. Any questions on the zoning officers' report?
I know we also didn't have it for, uh, it was inadvertently left off the November agenda, so I have that if you need to look at it as well.
All right. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Uh. CEO report for December, that was that? Okay, remarks by commissioners, any remarks by the commissioners here? Okay, you? All right, we don't have any public hearings, I don't believe, right, Paul?
None.
Okay. Approval of the minutes.
Most approve.
Most by Commissioner Dros to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any corrections or additions, deletions? No? All in favor?
I agree.
Both? Thank you.
Yep, and I'll just say, just for the record, since we didn't read it in there, it's the minutes of twelve eleven twenty twenty four.
Okay, thank you. Hey, new business. Uh, you want to read it, Paul? You want me to?
I would say read it in, and then I can kind of give a quick.
Okay. New business, item A, TPZ twenty four dash twenty three, pre-application, two six six Kits Lane. Request for a per- for a permit for a hundred foot tall flag pole.
All right, so thi- this is in front of you for, well, it's a pre-application, as we know, so again, this is not a, um, any of your opinions, um, you know, expressed tonight in guidance. It's mainly for guidance for the applicant on going forward. So this is an unusual request that actually have not seen a request for a hundred foot flag pole before. They are rare. Um, but we do have a provision of the zoning regulations, um, in section four point four point three that specifically says ornamental structures, monuments, church spires, shafts, domes, towers, or cupolas may exceed height requirements when approved by the commission. Um, there currently aren't, there's nothing in there. Again, the zoning regulations do not get as fine-grained to talk about flag poles. The closest analog, we could look at it as, A, a flag pole may very well fall into this ornamental structure. That's kind of its purpose. It's a ceremonial ornament ornamental structure. So that seems to fit with the wording. And then the other item, if you've seen your staff report that we kind of went into, the closest analog we have here in the town for anything of that height, um, for safety considerations, is a, uh, a wireless installation, cellular installation, you know, something where you would have that one hundred plus foot monopole. In this case, it's proposed at a hundred feet. Um, overall, in the zone it's in, on that, uh, Berlin Turnpike Zone, um, right now, the maximum height would be thirty five feet. So most flag poles that have gone in the town typically go in front of, you know, we highlighted a couple ones, you know, Shuko and Steelwrist on, um, on Payne Road is, you know, example of where we typically see where people put three flag poles, one flag pole out front. They're no higher than the building or around the same height, and they kind of just get installed as either part of a site plan or not. Most of the ones in Newington have not actually been through, uh, site plan process or anything. It just goes through the process of the building permit and zoning, as long as there's an ornamental structure and it does not go over the height. Again, this would require approval from the TPZ specifically for anything that goes over that thirty five foot height in the zone. Um, that's the kind of why, why they're here tonight. And what they're asking for you to opine on is, A, if you feel that this ornamental structure, a flag pole, fits within this regulation that says you can prove a, something that's higher for those specific reasons than thirty five feet. And then B is what you view as potential issues, concerns, that if they did come in with an application, what you would like to see as part of the regulations, and I can, I think from here it'd be good to have the pre-applicant come up and explain what they're looking to do. I think it's pretty self-evident. Um, ask some questions, but another little bit of analysis that we put in there is, if you look at the width of the lot, that a hundred foot, uh, flag pole likely could impact adjacent, uh, properties uh, just by the merits of, I think, that, you know, that the property isn't two hundred feet wide. So depending on, i- if it did fall, if, it's a big if, uh, when it comes to that. But that's something that the town has considered, at least when reviewing, um, those, uh, cellular towers and, you know, the monopoles. That is a, one of the major safety concerns of the town when you really read through that pretty long regulation. But that along with, you know, sometimes visual preference too. So it's really heightened safety on adjacent properties, and then visual preference are the two key items that are in the regulation.
Okay. Is the applicant here?
Yep.
Come on to see me.
Please, Paul, state your name and address for the record.
Tony Del Sandro. The shop is at two sixty six Kits Lane.
Yeah, you can just kind of.
Okay, so the, um, the flag and the flag pole, if you guys have been down in Hartford, down on Jennings Road, you sprayed at that dealer. It's majestic, right? You drive, I, my kids and my wife are here. We just take, oh, Dad, can't we put, can't we have something like that? I'm like, I'm sure we could. And I called up Eric and he said, oh, I never knew that there was any regulations, and I also talked to Connecticut, um, Flag. And they've installed in Glaston, uh, East Hartford, Hartford. He's like, he never knew that we had a, there was a zoning issue. Because it's a flag pole. Um, with that said, um, if anything, uh, I got, the flag is, will never be up when it's over fifty degree, you know, fifty mile hour winds. The pole's rated for a hundred and thirty miles an hour. I think we'd have more problems than, you know, my pole if that came down, but the flag, if it's on, the flag is up, it's rated for a hundred miles an hour. This is from the manufacturer. But we wouldn't, we would take it down. The flag itself is, is costly. It's almost a little over five thousand dollars just for the flag. So I don't want it ripping in the wind. We're going to take it down. It's going to be treated, uh, like it's expensive because it is. Um, with that said, I have, if it, the flag wa- the pole was to fall, it's in front of my building, the building, it would hit, hit the building. It's not going to fall, but if it was, it would land in the woods, not in anybody's car, anybody's cars or VR trucks. But, um, with that said, as far as light, because we have to light it. With that said, we'd be lighting it from the building at its highest point. So it'd be going straight up. Uh, if we don't know how to light anything after forty years of business, we got problems. I think we can light it without causing anybody's, you know, problems with the neighbors. Our neighbors are higher than us, so they wouldn't even come into play, and like I said, I have this is, this, um, shot of the actual area. The trees all around it are.
It's up on the screen, so you can see it.
Oh, yeah, exactly. So the trees all around it are higher than the flag pole, so it's kind of in an envelope anyway. What you'll see it from is the Berlin Turnpike, which is going to be super cool as far as I'm concerned. I think it puts Newington kind of on the map a little bit, and, um, that's pretty much all it is, you know? Uh, I'm a very proud American, and I'd like to have a flag that, you know, just kind of makes it a place to go, wow, this is beautiful. Because if you've ever seen that thing flying, I don't know if any of you guys have been down there, it's super cool. Just when it's kind of.
Yeah, with the pearl too.
Yeah, and that's, that's pretty much it. If you have any questions, I can answer. I'll try.
Do you have any questions? Mr. Meyer?
The only question I've got for you, I know you referenced cell towers. What about our radio towers in town that we've got?
I would say it's similar. Um, when we use that regulation, you know, unless it's a town on property, and then, you know, we do what we do.
A couple I've referenced, and one over on Willard Avenue, and then another over on Cedar that are, they've got to be well up there.
Yeah.
Right over on the high schools, yeah, pretty cool.
So, thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner Dros? Sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, first of all, I absolutely love your property.
Thank you.
But pavers coming into it, the landscaping's gorgeous, obviously the lighting is, everyone knows your Christmas decorations. Enormous, as many props as could be given to you for that. It's absolutely outstanding. Um, uh, where were you planning on putting the pole? Is it right dead center where that is actually shows now?
How about if I show you, because I took a picture?
Because the current poles you have there are upwards.
They're, they're in the front. Want to see? I can show you where it's going.
So this is the actual.
Yeah, there, there, there's the.
Gotcha. So it is pretty much.
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly.
I only reference it to the, 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 the poles that are there now.
Yeah.
Anywhere near those.
Okay.
So like you said, if anything was to come down, it would be in our, our front area where the waterfall is.
But to either side.
Yeah, and, and if, as you can see, it's landing in the woods.
Um, next question. Um. Well, look, I actually went over to, uh, uh, IKEA's parking lot, looking up from there. And with the current trees that you have there now, with the current pole that you have there now, I believe it looks like it's actually right at thirty five feet just by eyeball.
Yep.
Um. That's not too far from the top of the trees now, so it's kind of set into inside of the trees.
You're talking about the existing pole flags?
Yes, the existing one. A hundred feet versus thirty five is almost three times the height.
Right.
That might be visible from the center of town, like seriously.
Well, that'd be cool.
Have a way to go.
As far as I'm concerned, yeah.
To an extent, maybe.
Yeah.
To an extent, maybe. Um, I just want to make sure that all the other commissioners are comfortable with something that big. It will be rough elevation looking. It's going to be really close to your neighbors that are up the hill.
Uh, no, not even close. Um, you, if you, if you were at the shop, and you, if you pull in.
I did.
Yeah, you could see, we wouldn't be anywhere close, because we're in a hole. And then our neighbors, the other guys, wherever they're going to build that, or if they put it through, they're in a hole, and it keeps dropping, dropping. So we're not even close to that. I can guarantee you that, because, uh, you know, take a look at some of those trees that are around there, they're tall.
Gotcha. Only other question?
Sure.
When's the last time you looked at your flag, sir?
Uh, which one? The ones on the front?
The one that's there now.
Uh, well, I know we're going to be replacing them, because you know what it is, we're waiting for the wind, we have some bad storms come in, and they're, they need to be replaced. I got.
If we're taking something that big, and we're putting it where everyone can see.
Oh, believe me.
Logical question would be, how are things now? And the, 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 um, the business flag look great, the purple one that's underneath, it's faded, whatever.
That was, I don't know if you know that.
American flag?
We'll replace it.
Uh, I mean, if, if that's what we're looking at for the sake of, hey, we're going to take this huge thing and put it out where everyone can see, hmm, that might not be the look for Newington.
No.
You want to?
No, no.
You want to look at that, dude?
I don't think you know. If you know how I, we keep our property or trucks.
That's why I started it with that compliment.
Yeah, thank you. No, I would never have something there to reflect bad on myself or the town or anything like that. If anything, it's going to reflect positive. You, you know.
I would suggest you take a look at that.
Yeah, you can replace that. I'll do that tomorrow.
That's it, sir.
Okay. Question, Ethan?
Oh, okay. First of all, I think I would agree with Paul that, uh, four point four point three D is a, uh, authority to, to grant the waves. Go that way. The only concern I would have is the fact that it could fall on other properties. I mean, you could sit here and say it won't. Uh, the trees there now, who knows what's going to be in the future. You'd not be mad concerned. Visually, I, I don't have that much of a, a concern with it.
Right.
Is this going to be as big as the one that they have in Hartford?
I think that's.
That's going to be the American flag.
It's a, yeah, it's all, it's, yeah, you can only put one flag on it.
And I know the, the commission, I just should put a different, it's very hard to see on the screens. Uh, but I actually just put on the GIS with the contours to give you an idea of what we're looking at height. So, um, the buildings behind it look to be somewhere around two ninety um, for the contour, and we're looking at putting it about a two hundred, uh, contour. So logically, you're looking at, you have the house, the units are on top. You know, about ten feet would be above that, so whether their trees would see it or not, behind it in between on the hillside, it would be pretty much right at that top of the tree line, or that's what may be visible from behind, but it's not towering over. You have about, you know, anywhere from eighty five to ninety five feet of relief between this site at two hundred, which is down around here. See, that's the, the location, and then the two ninety five contour, and the two ninety contour kind of run into the back of this building, um, right here. So that gives you a concept of, you know, that they're roughly a hundred feet close above, so you'd be looking pretty much right out at it from the ones above. But that, that's the whole visual preference and looking at this and, you know, asking the applicant of what you want to see uh, as part of that application, what that could look like. I've had other, you know, this is, it's hard to do. You have to find a non-windy day, but I've had other ones where I've dealt with crane operations and them being installed where someone just took a balloon, put a hundred feet of, uh, cord on it, flew the balloon up there and took pictures from the surrounding area. That's one way that people can really demonstrate, and you get something that's really tangible that shows you, this is exactly where this is going to fly. It's not a guess. Again, that's something larger industrial operations, not something that's ornamental. Uh, far more impact when you have large cranes moving around, impact to residential overseeing a flag. But that's just something out there that I've done as part of, uh, the process of large structures, is just to see what that could look like.
Thank you for pulling that up.
So, yeah. I have one question.
Sure.
You know, there's a possibility that there may be condos or apartments put up in there, in that vacant lot. Will that light affect the apartments at all?
Not at all, because it'll be going straight up, and it'll be off the building at around twenty five to thirty feet. The light will be at thirty feet.
So it won't affect the apartments if they get approved?
Yeah, no, not at all.
Right now?
No. Not at all. I actually have, the light is actually adjustable with the beam spread, spread and the color. So I can change the color on it from a bright white light to a soft light, which is probably what we're going to do.
No, I'm just bringing it up because.
Yeah, no, of course.
The outcome of that is.
Yeah, no, I, I understand.
Commissioner Woods has some questions, I believe.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Commissioner Woods online.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, I actually don't have a problem with it. I think it's extremely patriotic. Um, I think it ends up being actually a pretty good place. Um, I know there is some concerns about if it falls, but if I remember right, the cell tower that is at the high school is actually tucked right into a property corner. Um, so, um, we, we had made, I don't know if I want to call them exceptions or not, because this, this is one of these tricky things. It's not really covered under our regs. Um, but he, he's protected kind of like in this little box cove of, of, uh, trees where there's a clearing. And the condos, again, they're two ninety, so they're a hundred foot below him at floor level, right? So then you get those trees that are there. I doubt that the people, other than through the winter months, when there's no leaves on the trees, will even see this. And, uh, I think we should be proud, um, what, i- if they are able to see it. I mean, it's our flag. It's our country's flag. And I don't know that I'd want to restrict, uh, somebody from flying a flag, even though it is a very large flag. Again, the, this particular business does an incredible job of maintaining their property. Um, you, you could tell it's a business owner that cares about, um, how his property looks, uh, not only to his clients, but to the town itself. So, um, my question really is going to go to Paul now. This is a pre-app, so we can't really approve or deny this. Does it require approval or denial? What, what, what are you looking to, for the commission to do here, uh, tonight, Paul?
I think so. Part of that is, A, does this fall under four point four point three, um, which I already gotten some feedback on that. Again, it is an unusual thing because it doesn't, there's no special regulations for something like this. It just says, you know, when approved by the commission. Um, pretty simple statement, but to me, when approved by the commission means that there should be some type of application that goes through a formal process and a vote, because that's the only way the commission can kind of officially approve something. So I would say it would be something along the lines of a, uh, you know, a site plan modification or a simple, whether it's a permit for installation of a flag per section four point four point three. You know, it would be some simple description like that on the agenda, what the application is. Um, so that, that's what I'm looking for, is that, yes, uh, not only me, but the applicant, go ahead and say, yep, we want you to, you know, absolutely no problem with you applying for this. It seems to fit under this, but also to give them, uh, you know, those questions when they come with the application. Is it something as simple as a dot on the map? Is it something that shows visual? What are you looking for, for that level of detail on an application? Because, you know, it's not to the level of so full site plan, um, application, but, you know, is this something where he's going to need to go out and get an A two survey? Uh, because that's typical on every application that we get. That's an additional cost, um, to the applicant of, I used to say they cost two thousand to three thousand dollars, but that's like up now.
Yeah, it's been like five.
Yeah, exactly. Times, they just keep getting more and more expensive, and it's an extra burden. Uh, it's basically the cost of a flag, another flag by, by that on top of the application. But that's, you know, what level of detail is the commission looking for? If this was, if I was able to do it administratively, I know that me and the town engineer would probably want an A two, we'd want it, you know, showing the distances, just so the commission could see, you know, that hundred feet, what the area is around it. Um, you know, i- it's not required by a special permit in our regulations, this is when approved by the commission. But it's something where, you know, I would recommend that you reach out to the neighbors. Um, and if they support it, that's not a bad thing, uh, when it comes in. It's not a public hearing type of issue, the way it's written. But it's very loosely or briefly written. There's brevity in this. It's just really a sentence that says you can approve taller ornamental structures.
Well, I guess I'll leave it. Um, speaking for myself as a commissioner, I would like to see this applicant move forward um, and work out, uh, the details with you to bring an application in front of us, so that we can make a determination. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meyer? Thank you. Mr. Chair, Paul, just as an aside, can you classify this otherwise? With a flag? Because as much as I understand the regulation on how it would potentially fall within this code, is there anything to negate it from not falling within it?
The key thing is the structure. And that, that's, you know, it, it definitely would be defined as a structure. It's a structure by building code. It's actually a structure that requires additional engineering um, from the building code side too. So, you know, if this is, you know, like sheds and things like that, they're minor, we deal with them administratively, but.
Right.
I don't see any other way of, you know, viewing a hundred foot structure and not having it necessarily in the code.
But I'm just saying, if this were to be a fifty foot flag pole, which probably a little more common, maybe a little shorter is probably the norm, flag pole. If those requirements would still.
Yeah, if, if this was a thirty five, if this was a thirty five foot flag pole, maximal height in the, there, there's, this regulation allows it to be higher. If this was thirty five, we would just take care of it administratively as a structure on site, ornamental, falls kind of in the in-between, as long as it's not in the setbacks and follows all the rules and regs. We would just basically view it administratively. Some wants, but, but the key thing is going over that height.
Right.
Brings us here.
Your existings are what, twenty, twenty thirties?
Uh, probably thirty feet. I'm not, I mean, it's probably fifteen years ago, so.
Right. And the flag size that you're proposing for it?
Third, the, the, the new one, thirty by, thirty by sixty.
Thirty by sixty. And directly right in front of your building?
Yeah.
Because you're gabled, correct?
Yeah. Yeah.
So how does that, have you ever done a?
We're at thirty feet.
You're thirty feet.
At the to- at the.
At the peak.
Top of the gable. Yeah.
Does that mean that would be my only?
Yeah, no, it, yeah, no, it wouldn't even come close to it. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from commissioners? What's your pleasure?
I would, I would express my, I agree with Paul, which basically agree to what Steve says. I agree with that.
Okay. All in favor of that?
Yep, yep. So, the only thing in there, I just put it up so you can see kind of the existing flag there. What we're talking about, it'll be back, the building's set back and up.
Hmm.
Um, I would ask, you know, what level of detail are you looking for? Again, we're going to work it out, um, with the applicant. But just to know, since, again, there isn't a section that says provide X, Y, and Z, am I going full site plan level of detail? Is this something minor? Um, again, our preference is to go towards the survey, have everything documented. That's our standard procedure.
From my opinion, Paul, we don't need a full site plan here, okay? We're just, we're talking a simple flag pole, my opinion. Maybe, any of? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There, there's one other flag pole that pops into my head, and that's Price Shopper, Price Shopper, and Stu Leonard's. And I believe both of those are in excess of thirty, thirty five.
Right.
And not, uh, you know, open up Pandora's box to it, but in the same token, I would have to, I would hate to see having to go through full site plans. I, I don't think that, that's relevant, you know, and mechanical engineering, civil engineering to it, absolutely.
Yeah.
But beyond that, I don't, my personal opinion is. I agree with you.
Okay.
Everybody agree?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Yes, we got our marching orders. We'll continue to work together, and you'll see an application in the near future.
All right.
I want to thank you guys. Just see if there's any, that's right, we don't have any discussions. Okay.
I want to thank you for coming in for this, but I appreciate your time.
Okay.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good luck, kid.
And again, staff is never trying to be over onerous, but a hundred foot structure, we will ask questions.
All right. Uh, all right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Discussion on, uh, B, discussion on future priorities, updates, Newington zoning regulations.
Okay, so, um, new year. Uh, we got a decent amount on the docket, so I kind of want to run what our department is doing, just to give you an idea too. I think everyone knows the town center study. Um, ideally, that'll be done, uh, mid-year, uh, kind of mid, somewhere in there, and we're working towards just getting that. Um, you know, moving through the process, uh, we're kind of wrapping up a lot of the base mapping and, uh, some of the, uh, market analysis, the start of the market analysis, the preliminary. Again, we'll have a larger market analysis of the town center and the town and the region. And then, as we get closer to the actual, uh, design. And then as we get closer to the actual design charrette. And from there, the design charrette's going to kind of, you know, discuss with the community and look at what could be built there, visual preferences, things of that nature. And once we get out of that, we're going to be looking at potential layouts for the site, for a couple sites. That, that's the point when we're going to be looking at potential zoning regulations. And when the market study will come back in and Kamoine will come back in to kind of look at the, okay, if this is the town's preference, is it actually buildable and what level would we need to get there? Again, that's the plan and that's the purpose of this study is to not only say, okay, what are the current conditions? But if what the town wants to see there, and then to really ground truth it and see, is that feasible? And find the in-between, because for me, there's no point in writing zoning regulations that can't be enacted. You know, if you're writing something that is not feasible, you're revising it five times before you're even getting an applicant through the door. So that's moving and progressing. I have the Safe Streets for All grant. I'm working on with the federal DOT on the final contract for that. I have our draft contract into them. And after we do that, that'll start likely in the next fiscal year or at the end of this one. Or we'll be studying Cedar Street. It's not a large grant. It's a total of hundred thousand dollars in funding. I know it sounds large, but once you involve traffic engineers and things of that nature, that goes quickly. We'll be looking at, you know, key areas. It's not going to be an exhaustive study that looks at every inch of that. It has been studied previously. There are some larger level studies looking at the corridor. But this is looking at kind of those pinch points where we have trouble getting pedestrians through now, looking at safety and looking at improvements that could be implemented. That's the goal of that project. We also have the DEEP Recreation Trails Grant. So that was awarded, not last year, but I believe the previous year. And actually what happened is after we got the award and working on the RFP for that, West Hartford put in for their grant for, really, our areas overlap. So we're at Newington's area of study for on-road and off-road. And then West Hartford came in with more of the study area, actually looking at through kind of the Brook and area there, and then how to connect with the rest of their trails. So ideally, we'll be doing this together with West Hartford, hiring the same consultant and working through the process, because it really makes no sense to do two separate studies with two different consultants in the same area. So that, that is why, you know, I know people know that it was out there, that we were awarded it. But it's, the plan is to work with West Hartford and do one consolidated study. And it kind of makes more sense. From there, just so I know, I have put in a grant application for historic resource inventory through Shippo. So if we were awarded that grant, that'll be another project that my department will be working on. I plan to have Eric spearheading that one, since it is really is, you know, on top of a work, it can be a little bit of a passion project too. So, you know, that's, that's Eric's main area of, one of your areas of interest is historic preservation, genealogy, colonial history and all that. So I think he's the right man for the job. So if we do get that and continue forward, that'll be another project that we're working on. And there's also the Cultural District Commission, so that's something that is being worked on. You'll see things in front of council. That's, I've provided some staff support in that in the future, and if that does progress, I'm likely going to be the staff person on that as well. So that, that's what we got on top of the other things, but those are the main grants. We also have a Raze Grant that was, CROG was awarded. So this is the rebuilding American infrastructure with social equity grant. But this is the multimillion dollar grant for the Berlin Turnpike that is studying Berlin, Newington and Weathersfield. We contributed, you know, the town share of that is thirty-three thousand out of the millions. DOT is kicking in two hundred thousand. CROG is also kicking in either one hundred or two hundred thousand. And then the rest is coming from the federal DOT to do this study. So that's actually going to be something that we have to assign some time for and participate in it as well. And we also have a Resilient Connecticut two point O grant through CIRCA that we're going to be working on. And hopefully I got CIRCA right on that one, but there's a lot of grants out there. That's something that is a no cost grant to us. We're primarily looking at, a lot of it is actually Webster Brook, some of Piper Brook too. We're looking at that Stam area where we've had NRCS studies in the past that had some recommendations. But working with them, we're going to be trying to identify some projects that can be, that are attainable. The goal in this is not to come out with the, you know, ultimately will, like, here's the multimillion dollar Army Corps project, which you may or may not get, that we actually have put in for the past, and those are congressionally directed spending, so you never know. But this will be look at things that make a large difference with less effort and less dollars spent. So that, that's what we have on the docket for this upcoming year and for the next. So it's a pretty busy schedule. But on top of that, I wanted to talk to you too, that zoning regulation rewrite has been a topic for the town for some years. It was actually first started and first thought funding before I started. It is funded through the CIP and we can actually work on this year as well. So to give you a concept, that a lot of these other studies are going to put focus on different areas of the town. And my goal is to just really try to double dip and use my time as efficiently as possible. That when we're studying the area, I'm also working on it from a zoning front too in bringing it to you as the commission. You know, I think one of the immediate areas of focus, as we know, is the Berlin Turnpike. It's always been, it's a special focus area of the P O C D. So I think that's where in the near term where I'm going to start some work on and focusing on it. Because as we know, there's a potential housing development that would require a zoning rewrite. If that, you know, goes forward through wetlands and then comes before this commission. We have the Raze Grant, as I noted as well too, and then you have the potential redevelopment of the Olympia site. So this is looking at the Turnpike, looking at that interface between the Turnpike and the residential areas behind it, what we have for buffers now, looking at the buffer along the front, what's conforming, what's not conforming, current residential densities, adjacencies, sidewalks, connections. A lot of this will be worked through the Raze Grant. But I wanted to start working on it from a zoning front, so that when the Raze Grant gets going, Newington is positioned in a good place that when they're doing their study, we have our questions ahead of time. So we can get some of the focus of that study on things that the town and what the commission actually wants studied and figured out. So we need to be a little ahead of them. And then from there, I do plan, and, you know, this is something that to look at our regulations and not only on, as we potentially rewrite them, but to do a legal review of them as well. So to get a legal review, all current state statutes, to see where areas may differ and look at suggestions for edits. So working on the zoning regulation rewrite, I kind of wanted to talk to the commission to see how you wanted to approach this as well, because this will be some work. This is plenty of work for staff too, but this will actually be a good amount of commission work that will be taking place during these meetings. It's not something that, you know, I plan to just sit in my office with a consultant and write the zoning regulations and give you a new one. That's not the proper way to do it, and I don't think anyone would be happy with the results, and we'd probably end up with too many rewrites at the end of the day. My idea is to break it down kind of into sections, focus on the Berlin Turnpike and those two zones out there. And then potentially shift over to whatever area is the next area of concern for the TPZ. Ultimately, work through the regulations. You know, take residential areas as one bite, take industrial areas as another bite, commercial areas, and work through that. So I wanted to kind of get some feedback from you, because this will be a big project. How you would like to go through it. It will take some time doing it piecemeal, but I think we'll get a better result at the end. And you won't be inundated with hundreds of pages of new regulations, trying to figure them out in one shot. So that's, that's my, my two cents, and I'd like to hear from the commission.
Commissioner Minor?
Just trying to remember, when, I seem to recall going through quite a lot of these on rewrites.
Three times.
I was going to say sixteen, fifteen, sixteen-ish. And I think we went through a lot. I can't say all, but I vaguely remember going through a lot of the different areas. And just, just as you described, you know, one, one at a time, working through them all and taking the better part of a year or two to do.
I remember going through them, and what happened is we were, there was, Frank did the, the rewrites in red. We would do section by section. Then we went through them the year after that, because somebody didn't like something. Then we, a year after that. So I'd like to get them done and not, and get them over with, so we can get regulations to work and it makes sense to everybody. Any other commissioner comments?
And the other thing too, Mr. Chairman, is, you know, since you guys fixed rigs last time, it's probably state statutes has gone to effect that some of our stuff is off. They've changed, so we have to continually update that as well.
That's another thing. We've got to find a way to tie in if the state statute changes. We should, it should be a tickler or whatever you want to call it that goes down and tells you our statute has to be reviewed at this point. Once they, once they go into effect, I think they go into effect October and December or so, November.
Yeah, January first punches came in too, yeah.
But we need to get those and we need to keep on top of those, so we don't have outdated regulations. The other question I did have, Paul, is we've had one steering committee meeting. When's our next one?
Oh, for the town center?
Town Center.
It, it'll be before the charrette. So the, the design charrette I'm targeting towards the end of February. So it should be a few weeks before that.
And well, what we have, once we get to second phase this, where we also have public, public meetings like we had before.
Yes, yes, the charrette will be a public meeting and I'll be looking to do more public outreach as the project goes through too. Unfortunately, with being sick in the holidays, I didn't get out there as much, but I think the goal is to actually get out of there, the community. You know, we do these things to ourselves as planners, but it's after hours type of things, whether it's showing up at TJ's and saying, hey, I'm here, you want to talk to me about this study? Going to the community cafe in the morning and talking to people there and just kind of making that available. That's something that I do want to work through as part of this process.
We did, I attended one at the senior center and I thought it was very informative. You were there for a while, Eric was there. We had a lot of the senior input, which was important to us, at least to me it was. I'm sure it was to everybody. And we then had one that night, I believe here, which is more, which we had more information brought in. And that's, I want to get as much information as possible so the consultant can get the information, we can get the information and, and get something that works. And this to me is very important, you know, so, because we're only going to get one shot, let's try to do it and do it right. As far as the, one of your trail thing that you were talking about. I'd like to look, I'd like to get a map for me tonight, possibly, before I go. And I'd like to look at that and see what, what I, come up with what I, what I think is a usable plan. We do have huge right of ways on Willard Avenue, and we do have huge right of ways in certain parts of Main Street, which we could then, you know, decide. Because I, you know, in my opinion, in the years that I worked for the department, the concrete doesn't last and we're constantly replacing that. If we could put down something like West Hartford did as a, as a batuminous type overlay. I would striping, you know, like the, for bike lanes and stuff and multi-trail. It's easier to cut out a piece of batuminous and repair it, as opposed to ripping out concrete, setting the subforms in, putting a new rods and stuff, pouring it and stuff, and it's a lot cheaper. My opinion. So I'd like to get going on that. I'll sit down with somebody else, we'll get you something going, Paul.
Yep, yeah, and, and West Hartford is moving through their approval process. They're not ready to go yet. But that is something that I want to keep working with them on, because it will be a joint project and theirs, you know, they have a lot. The interesting thing about the Newington study, you know, they inherited it, it's fine when it came in, is most of the actual study area is in West Hartford. Because when you think about it, Newington Junction, there isn't much land north of it and you're trying to connect to Trout Brook Trail. And you're trying to connect to the Fast Track up there and you're trying to connect to that. So a lot of the study area in that area of Willard, when it, what does it turn into? Does it turn into Newington?
Newington Road.
Newington Road, yeah. But it turns into Newington Road, you have in West Hartford. That has a lot less right of way that I've kind of seen, so that'll be interesting.
It narrows down when you get towards West Hartford line. Because I believe that was thirty feet on one side, thirty on the other, thirty, no, thirty on the right going northbound on the east side. And fifteen or twenty on the west, and then it narrows down as you get towards Shepherd Street. So I mean, and that's clearly defining, there's CHC monuments along there, so you can see where they are.
And I'll say, one, one thing I do want to look at, and this is just a notion right now and looking, but when we're looking at the zoning regulations too, if we're looking at areas that have higher environmental sensitivity, is looking at other options for, if we're going to think about redevelopment of those areas. Because not only just looking at the zoning regs to say, can we make them read better or more user friendly, are they compliant with law? But are there opportunities that we have, because this is our chance to look at that? Are there opportunities that we have to look at areas that would benefit from, you know, if they're right up against a resource now and the site is ripe for redevelopment, that someone retreats a little from a resource and you have a zoning in that area that allows for them to move a little more forward than that, but it's kind of that trade-off on a protection of a resource and enhancement, you know, things for flood control is our primary in Newington, that if we can get more area and more capacity for flood control, we're better off all around. There might be opportunities for that in the zoning regulations when I'm looking through it. So not only just regular setbacks, but looking at those features as well and trying to incorporate that, because that is, you know, we do have the open space committee as well, and they have been looking at and thinking, they did come up with a list of criteria for acquisition of open space. But the one thing that we're kind of missing here is what's the level of quality of our resources and what are the areas that are most threatened? So if I can do a little bit of that along with the zoning regulations for the purpose of the zoning regulations, I think it makes sense. With, with me and Eric, I have to maximize what we can get out of the areas we work in.
You definitely need some help with that. Any other questions?
Did you get enough feedback on the rest?
Yeah.
Thank you. That's your update too, right?
Yeah, and so the only thing, if we move to, so that's that, nothing on our old business. Petitions, I think we just got in the one for, it was today, right? Or yesterday?
Yes, today.
Today. So we just got in the ones for Taco John's at the furniture, where you guys just recently changed the parking regulations. So they are moving forward with that. Again, it just came in today, so we have to review it, but it will be on your future agenda.
And then we, the other pickleball.
Yep, and then there's another pickleball where we have to work with them on that. This, this is where Stickley's went in. Furniture on Kits Lane.
The old Bob's.
The old Bob's store. Again, Stickley's is planning to be there for a good amount of months, it's like.
No, actually, I think they dialed it back to either February or March.
Okay, because originally it was further on in the year, so February, March, that they may leave and another pickleball place may come in on that same location. This would be very similar to the Lowry application, except it's not in the town center zone, so there isn't the additional overlay on it. So I kind of see this as, you know, we still require a special permit for a place of recreation. So they still have to come in for a special permit, but it is in an existing shopping plaza and that will be moving forward.
Any other communications?
So I'd say under my report, so the only thing to report to you is the hotel, Woodspring, has been sealed. So that is finally operational. So on Cedar Street, or there, I believe it's seven twelve, if I remember the address correctly, seven twelve Cedar Street. They got their CO on the thirty-first, so they could get open by the end of the year. They've had delays that were out of their control with electrical primarily on that site. So, you know, I do commend the building department and the health department, were able to get out there and work with the owner to get them up and operating before the end of the year. So the Choice Hotel Group didn't, you know, try to add additional fines on top of the developer for not opening the year, because they've had so many delays that were out of their control. So, you know, I do have to commend those two departments, the fire marshal as well. Everyone out there worked great with the developer and I'm ha, very happy with how that ended up and we were able to get it through in the process. And then five fifty Cedar Street, Dakota, they have submitted their ASBILT. I believe that they have passed their elevators. They have fire inspection next week. So we're getting close to the seal on that. We're reviewing the ASBILT now with the engineering department. And ideally, we think probably by the end of this month, that very well may be sealed. Again, final inspections need to be done, go through the process, but it seems like they're finally getting close to that finish line, at least for those two buildings. And as I think I noted on a previous thing, that, a previous meeting, that the third building is not currently, you know, they haven't submitted. They don't have approved permits for it yet. They haven't gotten the financing for it yet. So right now, two buildings will be opening. The area, I pretty much, you know, worked with them and told them, yeah, you have to remove all the batuminous. You have to put grass down, you have to put it in a stable area, and they worked with us on that. But they'll probably be opening those two buildings hopefully by the end of this month.
Does that affect their agreement with us? Because they were supposed to have all three done?
I'll have to check on that one, on what they had for their agreement and talk to the town manager.
Yeah, I thought there was something in there that said all three had to be built. And I don't remember the, the exact language. I don't so long ago, but you might want to check on that. so long ago, but you might want to check on that. Let's see, because I think you needed all three in here to be open, if I'm not mistaken, right, Chris?
I I vaguely remember.
Yeah, and this is probably like a, not necessarily a TPZ type of issue because, you know, multiple times people come in with multiple buildings and things change. And as long as, as long as the two buildings and the rest of the site is per plan, that they would just come in with a new uh permit later to build that third building and we would review it in compliance with the site plan. But if there's an agreement with the town regarding any taxes or anything like that.
If I if I recall correctly, it was all related to the eight thirty G and everything.
Right, okay.
Because originally that application was denied, went through the eight thirty G process. I'm pretty sure there was something in there that referenced all three.
I just don't want to be, give them a permission open and have it get something rare its ugly head, so if you just review that, please.
Yep, I definitely will. And thank you for the information as well because, yeah, I wasn't here, so.
No, no, I I know, but there was a.
Do you think it was likely in the court case?
I remember being tied to that.
And that's why I'm glad I bring these things up. I will review that and take any necessary action.
Anything else?
Um that's it for me.
Okay, I thought we were gonna discuss the uh the other thing.
Oh, yes, uh Desegregate Connecticut, thank you for the reminder. So um Desegregate Connecticut uh does want to come and speak uh with the commission. They put in a request to me. And I kind of wanted to bring it up. This is the um Work Live Ride Bill. Um it did not make it through last year. Uh they're going to be trying again this legislative session. And they would like to come and talk to, um you know, they put out requests in multiple towns, to come and talk to their planning commissions. Um the zoning commissions about this bill, what it's proposed to do. And if the commission is okay with that, I'll schedule them on a upcoming agenda. Um you know, if we have a light agenda like something like tonight, I think it'll work well uh to kind of incorporate them. Whether you have any questions, issues, or if you have any questions before they come that you would like um answered. Uh that's that you can either tell me now or if you need some time to think about it, because I'm just bringing this up. Uh if there's anything specifically that whether you know about that bill, it'll give you a chance to, you know, maybe research it a little. I could maybe get a quick fact sheet from them and send it out to everybody before. Because I think the goal of this meeting is, I I don't want to see a meeting where someone just comes in and just gives you information that you can read in a pamphlet um as part of a presentation. I think a a good back and forth between those who are proposing this bill and putting their support behind it and a real discussion of how it impacts Newington, what our current housing stock is, what these incentives could mean for us, what the regulations could mean for us, for them to really hear every town before pushing it over the finish line and trying to adjust it accordingly is the best way a law can be made. So this is an opportunity for them to come and not only tell you what they're looking to do, but also for Newington to tell them. This is, you know, our scenario. This is our current situation. It's, you know, towns are very different across Connecticut. You know, we're not a four acre uh single family housing community where a lot of these pushes from the legislature. You know, rightly so, uh you know, in communities that have completely barred housing and done it through prohibitive of saying, yeah, you need a million dollars to just enter our market just because of the cost of the land value and everything. Newington is very different from that. Newington has lots of small lots, Newington has lots of opportunities. And the crazy thing of it has an affordable house at three hundred thirty thousand dollars nowadays. When you compare it to other areas that are in the fours and the fives, yes, three hundred and something is affordable, which is crazy. Uh you know, seeing those forty, fifty percent increases in all the markets uh over the last four years. But again, this is a chance for Newington to tell our story and for them to listen and take that into account for the bill.
Any questions, sir commissioners? I would like to see a a synopsis of what they have outlined. Um because this way here and then we can look at it and if you can email that to all the commissioners to look at it, come up with our questions prior to the set. Sitting here trying to make notes and then going back and forth, um because I'd like to like to hear what they have to say. Um the other issue that I'd also like to address is that um you know, Paul, I think you're doing a great job and I know you need help up there. So I'm going to try to meet with their, go up to next town council meeting and suggest maybe they give you some help. Because this is, you can't get this stuff done that we have. All right, we'll go to public and then another commissioner questions.
I'd say the last item we have is communication. I got a lot of talk in tonight apparently. So the last item is communications. Um this is included in your packet. This is the Connecticut Bar Association's education and training for the land use law. Um I can, you know, we do have funds to uh sign you up for this program. Uh if you would like to go and march, again, it's now a webinar, so you can attend it from your home on the weekends. It is a weekend, I believe it's.
All day Saturday.
Yeah, it's an all day Saturday or most day Saturday. But it goes over a lot of information.
A lot of good stuff. It really does.
Yep, and on top of it, you get the big book that comes with it too, that they kind of, it has all of those information, kind of the case law.
The new cases for the year for certain things, yeah.
Yep, so I I think it would be worthwhile. Uh if you would like to go, please let me know. We'll register you, get everything set up, whatever email you want. Invitation to go to and go from there. Again, this is a a good opportunity for training. It's every other year that they do it. So it won't come up for another two years after this. And now that's all I have.
Any questions? I'll go to public participation. Uh yes, that's one for Draco.
Neil Bedrico, twenty one, is in Old Terrace. Actually, Councilor Fleur and I were just talking. We're wondering, um, do you have any update or what's?
Can you, can you?
When you're, you know, talking about zoning in areas of opportunity, whatever. I know um LA Fitness has announced that they're moving and um I guess Bob's Furniture is moving in somewhere. So there'll be a couple of prime retail spots on the Turnpike. Do you know what's going on with them? Thank you.
Yep, let's say we we haven't gotten um, so Bob's is just likely moving across the street.
Across the street.
And that was already kind of written up in the paper as well. Um and then LA Fitness, um that was a, you know, a surprise to us like it is to everyone. They, no one reached out to the town saying we're planning on closing. Uh we actually got calls from residents saying, how could you let them close? It's like, well, private business. It is a large area over there and it actually had a pad site associated with it that was never developed either. So that could be an interesting opportunity, likely a developer might come in. And I would actually say the Berlin Turnpike has seen good turnover on properties. When something comes up, it's available. They're not sitting for a very long time. Um we do have these uses that are coming in temporary. I think that's a sign of the time. Little concerning with more temporary than permanent uses, but it's at least um vibrant enough that we're not dealing with large vacancies. LA Fitness will be a large vacancy on the site, but it's a large opportunity. But no one has come forward yet for that site.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody online, Eric?
Well, it's a couple people online, but none of them have their hand raised.
Yep, so if you are online and want to speak, please raise your hand through Zoom.
Yes, please come up and say Jamie, that's just for the record.
Robert, Robert Kane, C A N E, one fifty five Brentwood Road. I just have a couple comments on the topics for tonight. Um the flag pole pre-application sounds like a great idea. If I could see it, the flag from my house, uh I would have no problem in that. So just to give you one member of the public's perspective, um as far as the zoning rewrite goes, I would call your attention to, um there's a New Jersey court case last year about uh fifty five plus housing. Maybe you're familiar with it. Um Dwight Miriam sent it out on the planning listserv at some point during the year. But um the New Jersey, I believe it's the New Jersey Supreme Court, I don't, I haven't followed the case closely. But uh the New Jersey Supreme Court essentially made um age-based discrimination illegal for housing. Uh so I know that many people in town want more uh fifty five plus housing. I do too. I'm thirty eight, but I still think that there's a serious lack of housing for people like my parents who are both over fifty five. Um so I'd just say be cautious with the New Jersey court case um when we're planning our fifty five plus communities and doing the zoning rewrite. And uh that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else?
Yep, go ahead, Rose. I believe Rose is online.
Rose Lyons?
I believe so.
Hi, Rose Lyons, forty six Elton Drive. Um had a question. I don't know if you can answer it now. But I was at the Collier meeting and they said it was going to be on the town website, which I did find it there. But the only reason I found it is because I knew where to go. I thought that we had asked when we were there if it could be right in the beginning of the um website or give you directions to get to it. Uh it was a very informative meeting, other than the fact that it was very hard to hear the questions that were being asked because there wasn't a microphone available. But I think if there's people in town that weren't able to make it and would like to review it, there should be an easier way for them to get to it on the town website. It's just maybe, maybe it's me. I I've never had a good experience with the town website, but I did get to it because I knew to go to the planner, then to go to the Collier, then go to theirs and look at public meetings and I had to do like four different things to get to where I wanted to go. But um and thank you for the updates on the various projects and such. Uh I haven't heard much lately about Keeney. I know this isn't a back and forth, so I won't get into that. But at some point in time, there's some older streetscape projects and things like that, that maybe that's engineering I should talk to. But my main concern was the Collier uh informational session. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons. Anyone else?
No one else has their hand raised, Mr. Chairman?
All right, we'll move on to remarks by commissioners. Any remarks? Yeah, my remark is uh my closing remarks. I want to thank everybody for coming out this whole night. Um and please drive home safely. And with that, I'll change the motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor? Thank you very much.